Well, welcome, everyone. I'm glad that you were able to make it this time, Kate, so we now have our full committee.
I'm going to be here.
Excellent. We need to announce that the meeting is being recorded.
And what meeting it is in the big.
Oh, thank you. So it's August 22nd, 2019. And this is the Select Committee on Pesticide Reduction of the North Hampton City Council. So we have on our agenda welcome and introductions. Do we want to go through that again? Kate wasn't here the last time.
Wait, we should have announced that the meeting is being recorded.
I did that.
You did?
I did.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
It's the right side of your computer that's...
Yeah, maybe some clock, you know.
Did you give up on the, Jim, did you give up on the idea of projecting the agenda?
Yes, I did.
Great, that's fine, we don't, I don't think we...
I gave it a shot. We have a new computer for the council office. And I don't know how to put it up yet.
Okay. No, that's fine. So let's just go around. And my name is Adele Franks. And I, my background is as a public health physician. And I had a very strong interest in pesticides for a variety of reasons. And actually gave a presentation to the Board of Health on this topic about four or five years ago.
I'm Cynthia Swobosz, and I am a member of the Board of Health. I teach at UMass, health communication and reflections on health. And I'm taking the minutes.
And I'm Jim Nash of the Ward Three City Councilor.
I'm Alisa Klein, the Ward Seven City Councilor.
I'm Kate Simmons, and I am an environmental chemist by training. And have worked with societies in the past.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Let us approve the minutes of the last meeting. And then we will be waiting for the mayor's arrival after that. One thing I wanted to point out was that in the minutes we did state what our...
We can move to approve them before we can discuss anything on them.
Just saying that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Six. And now we do the discussion.
Oh, now we do the discussion.
It's just parliamentary order.
It's very, very helpful. Someday I'm going to learn all these things. Well, I wanted to point out that we did make some preliminary assignments. And Kate was not here, but we did have a communication by email. And as I understand it, you have accepted what we suggested. Okay, so I just, that's, that's the only thing I was, I wanted to say about the minutes.
Just a reminder, what's, what was the acceptance form?
Okay. Kate was going to cover the effects of pesticide use.
Oh, okay.
So, and these things are all in the previous minutes. So I don't think it needs to be repeated. But just for our purposes today. Cynthia and I are going to explore policies and practices from other communities. Cynthia and Jim are going to engage with the North Hampton City Departments to find out what is being done and what grant opportunities they may or may not be aware of. And Alisa is going to look into grants, costs, and funding opportunities. And also is gathering a bunch of information on a wavelength so that we would all have access to the same body of documents.
There was one more thing that I was going to check with the MMA, the Mass Municipal Association, to see if they manage information about different municipalities in the Commonwealth, whether or not they have taken steps around pesticide reduction and what they are.
Would you like? It's mentioned in the minutes that you would like to understand more about MMA's stance and efforts. Do you want to add that though to your assignment?
The, to understand their stance?
Yeah, to explore what they are.
I thought you wanted to find out where they stood on pesticides.
Oh, well, I, yeah. Okay, it's both of those things, though. It was also to see if they have any kind of database of, that was my understanding anyway. But that, it's fine, it doesn't, again, it doesn't have to reflect exactly perfectly.
Okay, so I guess the question is, since we're in the process of approving the minutes, did you want to amend the minutes to include that in your assignment?
No.
It is mentioned further on in the minutes.
Oh.
And any other discussion about the minutes?
To approve or what do you think?
We move to approve. And I'm sorry?
You have to close. We're closing the discussion.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, we will close the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any stand aseids? Okay, the minutes are accepted.
Well done.
Phew, boy, that was, that was just so challenging. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is the mayor's appearance. And he has a few more minutes before he's due. So I'm wondering if, is there anything else we can start to talk about?
Actually, nothing else is on the table. I do have two questions in my head. I'm not, I'm just addressing everybody in this, but the first one is what precipitated the formation of this committee? Was there any singular event or?
I'm just thinking technically, can we actually, if it's not on the agenda, can we discuss it? I mean, it's not so much deliberation.
But you...
Technically, we're not supposed to talk about something that isn't on the agenda, according to open meeting law.
However, in the last meeting, in the minutes, you reviewed the resolution that established this committee. So it seems to me that you can reiterate what's in the minutes already, which is basically...
If we were talking about the minutes still? This open, this parliamentary stuff is really like...
I think this is carrying it a little far. I mean, this is already part of the public record that this committee was established. It's in the city council deliberations and minutes, right? So a committee, one of our committee members is just asking for a rehash because she wasn't involved with that.
Okay.
Actually, I have to confess, I believe I did read that resolution. Somebody sent it to me at one point. So I have a second question.
Okay, oh, what's that?
The goals, one of the goals of this committee, a goal.
Well, let's see, that's written in the...
I believe it's also in the resolution.
I think so too. Welcome.
Hi.
Come on in.
What, no tie? I hope I'm not late.
You are right on time.
It says 10:10, so it's 10 on time.
You are exactly on time. And we were just filling in until your arrival.
Okay.
So welcome.
Thank you.
And, and you, and we would love to chat with you. And you don't really need to stand at the podium unless you want to.
I would like to stand, although my back's bothering you, so, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Or you can stand here.
You can stand anywhere you like, I just want you to be comfortable.
Sure.
Do you know everyone on the, on this committee?
I think I do.
I don't think we met formally. Right, I'm Kate Simmons.
Hi, Kate.
And I'm an environmental chemist, so that's why I'm here.
Wonderful, yeah. And I know the two folks, and I obviously know from Board of Health. Yes, exactly, and I know Adele Franks, so yeah. Hey. Yeah.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
So we, as you know well, we've been tasked with providing a report in relatively short timeframe on pesticide reduction recommendations for North Hampton. And in order to do that, we are going to need to find out what pesticide use currently is like in North Hampton. And so we wanted to talk with you.
Municipal pesticide use, you mean?
Municipal.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
That's correct. Thank you for that.
No, no problem, just wanted...
Does that include the school, the school committee or school grounds?
The challenge there is that the council doesn't have authority over the schools. That's one of the challenges. And so I can figure that one out. Like the school, like the city council can't actually call school employee before it can. It explicitly says it in the charter, actually. You can call municipal employees or city officials, but can't call school officials. So I have to think about that.
However, we can set policy for the city. If, I mean, we're not necessarily planning on doing that per se with the outcome, but just in terms of setting policy for the city, it seems like that would ultimately cover something that has to do with the schools. That doesn't mean it can't be a discussion and whatever in the school committee. But I think if we were to create some overarching policy for the city, the schools would fall under that. But that could just be my interpretation.
Yeah, I don't agree. Because actually, the school committee by law makes all policies for the schools and actually controls all school property. So that would be challenging. Because then you could make a policy, the city council could make a policy that, you know, we'll teach math this way, math shall be taught this way, and the school committee, that would be the challenge there. But, so, but yeah, like everything, parking, anything having to do with the schools is all done and controlled by the school committee. So that would just be the one challenge there. But I can, I can look into that. But, so that would just be the one challenge from the school piece, the city school piece.
But the schools, could, could the schools voluntarily decide, could the school committee voluntarily decide that they would like to adhere to any city council recommended policy?
They could, and they could enact their own policy. That's what I'm saying, they would have to enact their own policy. So the school, so the school committee would have to talk to the administration, to their maintenance department, and they would have to make that decision. I don't, but the city council can't compel them to do that.
And in our efforts to gather information, and it's very important to us to gather information that could affect the children of our city, which means the schools, what access would we have to people who work in the schools to determine what kind of pesticides are currently being used?
That's one I could definitely talk to Dr. Provost about, the superintendent. Also, full disclosure, I mean, that's not hidden information, I'm also the chair of the school committee. So I'm, I sort of straddle these two, these two universes. And so that's certainly something I can talk to Dr. Provost about. And he may want, he may be willing to just do that voluntarily. So I can certainly talk to him about that. And let him know about the committee and let him know about this.
That might be a segue into another piece of what I think we wanted to do with you here is ask you procedurally about how you are interested in us soliciting information from city employees, what the, what the process should be.
So I would, I would, I would use the, I would follow the sort of the same process that our, your city services committee follows. City Services is a committee that looks at city services and how different departments are performing various city services. And they bring in city departments and talk to them about, you know, various issues. And sometimes it's issue specific, sometimes it's just generally wanting to know what's going on within the department. And the way we typically schedule them is through the mayor's office. So the city services committee will contact us and say, we'd like to have the DPW director come in. And we also ask that, and this is also, it's a requirement of the charter, we don't enforce it to the letter, but just not only invite them to come, but also what they're being asked to come speak about. So it's not, you know, the bureaucratic method, or it's not you're coming in and you're going to be sandbagged on, you know, something like that. So like the charter actually says that the council can call any city employee, but they have to provide questions in writing in advance of what they're going to ask. And again, I think it's just a protection that you're not going to bring in some employee and then embarrass them by asking them, you know, how many manhole covers did you install last year or something? You know, something like that. So, so that, that would be the way that I think would be the best would be to then, to contact us and let us know what, who, what, what department you like and where. And, you know, what we typically do with the city services committee is we try to work out a schedule and, you know, based on their meetings and who's coming when. That would be, that would be my preference. Does that seem workable?
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, that's, our committee can contact yours?
Exactly.
We don't have to go through city services?
No, 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 no. I was just saying that using that same method, which is, you know, we'd like to have the DPW director come in, and we'd like to know X, Y, and Z. And then she could bring whatever staff she needed to provide that information. Like I would, you know, I would not want you calling, I would not want you contacting, you know, sort of an underling at the DPW to come in. I would want to go through the director and then have the director bring in people that would have that information. Yeah. Obviously, it'd be good to know what kind of information you want. I mean, I think it's fairly clear what kind of information you want. So, yeah. And the same with the planning department. I mean, this isn't super complicated. I mean, we're basically talking about, I think, central services, the planning and sustainability, and DPW. I think that's it, really.
Probably Board of Health because of the pesticide, because of the spraying.
Sure, yeah, Board of Health as well. Yeah. But just in terms of who's involved directly with, who would be involved with any kind of maintenance that might involve herbicides or pesticides.
Or who has MSDS sheets on file?
What's that?
It would be whoever has the MSDS sheets on file.
Okay. Interesting.
Somebody has those.
The what sheets?
MSDS.
NSDS.
Yeah. I forget off the top of my head what that stands for, but it's just a fat sheet of toxicity, all kinds of things about any chemicals that are used. And I'm sure someone has filed them somewhere.
Okay, so this would be anything that's being applied under a license?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we must. If there's anyone applying anything, they would have to have a license and...
DPW head probably knows.
Yeah.
Or a lot of them are stored.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We'll, we'll check on that, for sure, yeah.
So getting a little more granular, do you, would you want, would you want us to just kind of talk about the department and then it would be internal, the decision of who would come and speak to us? Because I'm just thinking like an example would be, would we say we'd like someone from the DPW? Or could we say, you know, specifically Rich Parceletti? Or if we want to talk to someone who works on conservation issues, we would, you know, say the planning department? And then it could be Wayne, but maybe Sarah has more knowledge in terms of, you know, what's actually done in conservation areas. So how do you want us to manage that piece of it?
I think it would be, I think if you provide the type of information you're seeking and you provide it to the department, that it will be incumbent upon them to bring in the right people. I mean, Rich certainly would be involved for one segment, but then there's a whole other segment of DPW that is related to, you know, like the levees, for example. And some of our requirements under the Army Corps of Engineers for how we maintain the levees, which he wouldn't be part of, he's not part of any of that. So that would be under a totally different division. So, so I think that would be the key. You know, Board of Health, hmm. The other thing I would say about Board of Health, I mean, the Health Department, you may want to call it in. The Health Department does manage our mosquito program. So that's not the Board of Health, it's the Health Department. Although they use a third-party contractor, subcontractor, who does our mosquito surveillance and our mosquito prevention issues. I don't believe, they're not using, they're not, they're not using herbicide. I mean, they are using the little bio-organic hockey pucks that they put around. But that's, that's what, that's, I don't think, they're not doing any spraying of...
It's not a pesticide, per se.
Not that I'm aware of. But obviously, people have differing interpretations of what's, of what's pesticide, what's not, so.
I guess that's part of our job.
What's that?
That's part of our job, is to figure out what's being used and how toxic it is.
Exactly, yeah.
Is it, is it best, I'm asking everyone this, for these individual department heads to come to this forum? Or can we interview them on our own?
I think at our last meeting, we suggested that it would be you and Jim that would interview everybody separately, so that we didn't have to deal with open meeting law and all the complications there. And if there's no forum, then we'll think it's canceled, et cetera. So if it's just the two of you, that's not an issue.
I just wanted to clarify from the mayor's perspective.
Yep.
That's fine, if that's how you prefer to do it, yeah, I mean, that's fine. It'd probably be easier to schedule two, possibly. So, yeah, that wouldn't be an issue. Yeah.
And in terms of timing, you know, we have a very, a short timeframe to produce this report, so I'm concerned about that. And so we will get right on this concept of trying to schedule through your office. But I'm a little more concerned about how much time might it take to get a decision about the schools?
I could talk to you about it.
Okay, great, because it would be a, to me, that would be a huge deficit if we were not able to talk to the schools.
Yeah.
It's a big part of what I think we see as our mission, is protecting children.
I get that, but it's, but you just have to understand that there's a structural, you know...
No, I was just wondering about the timing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Collecting from Longwood, is this, we're trying to put together an inventory of exactly which pesticides are used within the city, municipally and possibly a school, right?
Correct, because that would be a benchmark. If, if our report is going to be focused on reducing the amount that we're using, then we need to know when we're using. If we're not using any, there wouldn't be much reduction to happen, would there?
Gotcha.
Well, and to the point of the school department, I think the first thing we want to do is just get information. And that...
Which I think is why I think that there won't be a problem with that.
Right, and so I, you know, whether or not we're going to want to recommend that the school department do anything out of that, we don't know yet, but we, you know. And you're comfortable with us possibly getting that information?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm going to talk to the superintendent about it. I just, again, I think you would just have to be careful that you're couching your recommendations in a way that, you know, we recommend, we would recommend that the school department, you know, do this. Because you really can't mandate that the school department do anything. I'm just being blunt with you on that.
Thank you.
That would be my opinion.
Wanted to ask about certain commissions too. For instance, the Ag Commission, which I know is a state mandated commission, I believe. If we want to talk to people who are members of the commission, does that make sense? Or would it make sense, is there, I don't even know, is there a staff member who works with that commission? Would that be preferable? Would we need to talk to you about inviting commission members, or can we do that on our own?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, I mean, the Ag Commission, I mean, they're not state-created like the Board of Health, for example. They're not statutory, they don't have statutory authority like the Board of Health. I mean, they are, we did create them and they have, they're, they're part of the Planning and Sustainability Office. They're staffed by Planning and Sustainability, they're part of that. So Wayne is actually, I think, the staff person for them. I don't know who the current chair is, but I'm sure that the, I'm sure that, I know Rich Jasky was very interested in coming in and giving farmers perspective, although, you know, the challenge is you're not actually men, your charge has nothing to do with private farmland. So, so they may be worried that you're going to be banning pesticides throughout the whole city, which you can't actually do. So I, but it would be good to hear their perspective, I think.
So you know, we had talked about, first of all, there were a number of people that applied to be on the commission that were not chosen by the, this select committee, that were not chosen by the city council president. And we have already been in touch with a number of them and still have to be in touch with them to ask them to come and speak to us, to bring their expertise to the... So Rich Jasky is part of that. And, but then I was just wondering about other, if there are other specific commission members that we want to invite, if we can do that, if not through the mayor's office.
Yeah, I think that's okay. The one thing I would just want to be careful of is not, is again, an open meeting law issue. Because if, because really, are they speaking as private citizens or are they speaking on behalf of the Ag Commission? You know, I just, you just have to be careful there. Because actually, you know, one of you probably shouldn't go off and say, I'm speaking on behalf of the pesticide committee, because you're not really. Like, the group has to agree on what you're saying publicly. So I would just be concerned that, you know, I think if you wanted, I just would not want you to, if you talk to three or four different people on the committee and then give it the imprimatur that this is coming from the commission, because that's really not coming from the commission. You're just getting individual opinions from different people. It's not truly, you know, the commission didn't meet, discuss it, and say, this is what we believe as a commission. So that would just be my one concern about that. I don't have a problem with you inviting those individual members. I just would have to be clear that they're not speaking to you as an Ag Commission member. And that they're not, they're not, they're not empowered to speak on behalf of the Ag Commission. That would be the one problem.
So when we reach out to those kinds of people, we should just be clear to say that we're asking them to speak as a private citizen? You know, they may be informed by what they know from their participation on those commissions, but...
I mean, they're on the Ag Commission because they have expertise, they own farmland, they're active in farming, you know, whatever, that's the reason they're on it. So they would be a good representative group of people, you know, to represent the agricultural perspective, so.
But if they decided they wanted to go on record as a commission, then that would be their prerogative. They could put it on their agenda for a meeting, they could discuss it and make whatever recommendation they wanted.
Yeah, the only, the only problem is I just, again, I don't want to set, I don't want to, I just want to be careful because you don't want to have like sort of serial deliberations. Like, if you meet with a quorum of them separately and, and get them to a point that then they're, you know, going to come to a decision as a group, you just have to be careful about that. So that would be the only thing, I wouldn't want to inadvertently put them in that situation. Because that is the problem when you, because, you know, violating open meeting law doesn't have to be, you know, three of you having a meeting outside somewhere. But it could be, well, I talked to Jim, and Jim supports this, do you support it? And I talked to Adele, and she supports it, do you support it? So there actually is, there's that kind of a thing that can happen. So again, I just would want this to be, I don't want to, I don't want to put you in a situation where that might happen.
Thank you for the reminder, yeah.
Like, if you meet with them all separately and then, and then, well, your colleague, Mr. Jasky was here, and he said X, or, you know, whatever it is, I'm not, I just, you have to be careful about that.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm sensitive to these things because there are people who often, if they don't agree with, if they don't agree with the substance of what a body is doing, they'll often go after the process. So I think it's always important to make sure the process is very airtight in that way and can't be open to scrutiny or criticism, so. But do you think that, so do you think that like the chair of the Ag Commission, I mean, you could also, you could also hold a joint meeting with the Ag Commission and invite them all to come in and have a conversation with them together, and that's the other possibility. Like, I don't know how many Ag Committee members you want to have in.
Well, I think we haven't decided that either. But we do know that Rich Jasky had expressed interest, and so we definitely want him, he's on our list, for sure. So we'll have to determine whether we want more than one person from the Ag Commission to give us feedback. And if so, then they need to decide if they want to do, how they want to handle that.
Yeah, and he, and if, and he may, he or she may feel like, they may want to raise it at an Ag Commission meeting and say, I'm going to go testify, is there other information you would like me to convey on behalf of the Ag Commission? And if that happened at a meeting, then he could, they, you know, he or she could actually do that, so. So does that sound all...
Yeah, it sounds like we will be, being in touch with your office to start scheduling meetings very soon. And are there any other questions?
I'll just contact Lynn, I think that's what City Services typically does, she's my chief of staff. You know, you could just send an email to Mayor Ag, but Lynn typically is the one who handles that for City Services and just coordinates with them, sets up the schedule. We do the same thing for budget hearings, when budget hearings are scheduled with departments. Sets up the schedule. We do the same thing for budget hearings, when, when budget hearings are scheduled with departments, so.
That sounds good.
Okay. And I will talk to the superintendent about the other information. I mean, clearly, the information is public record. So it's not like you, it's public record. So certainly, information you could find, but, but in terms of other staff members from the school department, that would just be something I'd have to talk to the superintendent about, whether he'd be, would be comfortable about that, so.
So it's public record, so somewhere on the city's website, or we can find this information?
No, what I'm saying is that, I mean, technically, at the end of the day, you could say, "I would like a copy of any invoices for pesticide purchases," right? Wouldn't that be a valid public record? And then we would have to, you know, give you, give that person information, you know, about how long it will take us to provide it and search for it and discover it and, and prevent, provide it. So I, I was just saying, in that context, it's, it's public record.
Right.
So, so, but again, I'll, I'll talk to Dr. Pirlo, so I'm sure that that would be something that they could provide, information they could provide.
Is it the DPW or Central Services that actually oversees turf management and things like that in school grounds?
No, they're separate.
They're completely separate?
Yeah, so DPW manages city parks and city grounds. And the school department has its own maintenance division, which manages school grounds.
And do they sit in the DPW or?
No, they're not part of the DPW at all.
Do they use different equipment? I mean, how?
Totally. It's one of those.
They have all their own equipment?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the last.
So all their purchasing, purchasing is also done separately? There's not kind of a joint purchasing process that happens?
I mean, there, a lot of purchasing happens through Central Services. But it's obviously paid for out of the school budget versus the city budget. And I will say to you, this is totally enough, has nothing to do with your work, but I mean, that's one of the, you know, we've combined human resources for city and schools. We've combined IT for city and schools and, you know, something else that's in the future, potentially would be combining maintenance of city and schools. Again, it can't be imposed on the schools. It, it, state law requires that the school committee has to agree with. So it's, but it's a longer conversation. But anyway, that, but that is, they are separate.
So an athletic field, if it's on school grounds, it would be managed by the school personnel?
That's correct.
And if it's on city land, non-school land, it would be managed by DPW, is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, Florence Fields and Arcanum and, you know, all the traditional city-owned parks that are managed by the Parks and Recreation Department are maintained by Forestry, Parks and Cemetery's Division of, of the DPW. But there's a separate crew, lands, groundskeeping crew for the schools, which their headquarters are actually behind the Survival Center. They have a garage behind the Survival Center and they do all of the maintenance and mowing and field maintenance. Or they do all the ball fields for, you know, at the high school, you know, that kind of stuff, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah. Not the most, maybe not the.
String of line.
I agree with you. But again, as is often the case, there's often a concern that if it becomes, one of the longstanding concerns is that if it, if it does get folded into the city, will the schools get the priority that they think they need, you know what I'm saying, as opposed to when they have their own staff? So.
But in an era of kind of regional purchasing and, you know, we know that it's actually money-saving, so it's kind of.
Potentially, yeah. Potentially, yeah, no doubt about it. But it's a, it's a, yeah. And it's also often about the people and the people who, you know. We've been able to, over time, when we had a retirement with the IT department, that was an opportunity. For the school IT department, that was an opportunity to do a merge. This is not even in any of your purview, but it's just, just give me the background on why it is the way it is. And also, you know, again, it shows you the fact that the school does have its own independent authority. I can't reorganize the school. I can't issue, if I could tomorrow, I'd do an administrative order and I'd merge those two. But I don't have that power to do that, so it's outside of my authority. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
No problem, yeah. Enjoy the rest of the day. Take care.
Thank you. Well, that was very helpful. So, um, we will need to decide. I don't think we need to do it inside the meeting, but we need to decide who's going to contact the mayor's office to schedule these things. And as far as I understand it, it's going to be the two of you who do all those departmental interviews. Is that still, is that still okay?
Well, and do you think that we, as a body, should discuss what we're going to ask them?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, for sure.
Unfortunately, that's not on the agenda. So that puts us out a little bit more unless we can eke in an agenda.
Well, we're, we have, we number seven, discussion of ways to solicit information from ex-crews. So I think that actually is exactly what we can do during that period. And I think we should have a little bit more of a discussion about whether or not there's certain people that we want to actually come and speak before us. So I would like that to be included in that number seven as well.
Yeah, that's actually what I had in mind for that, those agenda items. But under review of committee member assignments and plans, I think that what we're going to, what you all are going to be talking to people about would fit in with that.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have that up to.
Absolutely.
And I don't know, Jim, I mean, this is, you know, you and I don't, too, but, but it sounds like it's about four places, five central departments?
I have five.
Yeah, go ahead. Which ones do you have?
Well, the Health Department, I have Central Services, I have DPW, Planning and Sustainability, and the Board of Health. They're both diff, they're different, right? Board of Health and the Health Department.
I would, for this, just go to the Health Department.
Okay.
And then hopefully the schools.
And hopefully the, the schools. The, the interesting thing is that I believe Central Services has, is where, is the overarching department that also oversees the, the school grounds.
That's what I was trying to kind of pin the mayor on, and my understanding is that's not true from what he just said.
Well, I think within that overarching, and then it gets broken down, so this is, this is the school portion of Central Services and here's the, the city's.
So there's like school employees that are doing it, but not Central Services employees?
I, I, I think that's.
Yeah, yeah. So when I was putting together this presentation for the Board of Health four or five years ago, I made some calls to some schools. So this is anecdotal information, okay? And, you know, what I learned was that the, the staff people that I talked to were not necessarily very well-informed about what the policies were. And when I specifically asked about situations they ran across, it turned out they just went to the hardware store and bought some spray and went and took care of whatever they considered to be the problem. So I don't know that Central Services is going to be very, you know, and certainly wouldn't be aware of that example. But every school is supposed to have a record in the central office that any parent or maybe anybody in the public can go and say, "I'd like to see the list of what chemicals you're using in the school, on the school grounds." Be interesting, you know, if anyone had the time to do that, what you'd find out. But it's also an informal thing going on that I, I have no idea whether, whether that ever appears in any records, the record-keeping.
You mean, to the hardware store?
Exactly. So, you know, that would be one of the questions that, that I would think would be interesting to ask the school folks is, you know, if somebody in the school grounds perceives there's a, you know, a problem and they go to the hardware store, how is that, how does that get recorded? Does it get recorded?
Can I just bring up this, well, the Board of Health can regulate health in schools.
So you have more authority than the city council, is what you're saying?
Right. And I'll just give an example. We decided that there should be no smoking in the school grounds and in the school attached areas. We just did that. So I put, I, I just want to put that out there. The second thing I want to put out there is that, you know, I attended this webinar thing for the Toxic Action Group. And they said the most effective pesticide policies in cities and towns in Massachusetts come from the Board of Health. Now, I'm not saying I want to, the Board, I can't speak on behalf of the Board of Health. But we do have that ability, the mayor referred to it as statute total, the ability to do this. And there is a model, city marble, town of marbles, city marble?
Marblehead.
Marblehead, yeah. And so I just think we just need to remember that in terms of our, you know, our future recommendations. Or, and again, I'm not saying the board is taking this up. I don't think it's been, without Adele's presentation, you know, brought to their attention. And perhaps the result of this committee can bring it to.
I really appreciate that you're bringing that up, Cindy, because, and I think that's why, speaking for Adele here, Adele and I both turned to the Board of Health as our first kind of attempt to try and address pesticides in the city. And to be perfectly blunt and speaking just for myself, not finding a lot of resonance there or interest in kind of pursuing this, that's kind of how I then began the process, that I began to see what we could do about pesticide reduction in the city. But I think you're right, that most of the models that we have in the state of Massachusetts and the Commonwealth are that boards of health have kind of stepped up and made a decision about changing how pesticides are used. So, you know, I would love it if there were some way in which we could engage the Board of Health in a really substantive conversation here. And that might be something that we also want to think about in terms of who we invite and who we talk to and, so maybe adding that. And then one other thing, going back to something that we've talked about just before this, the list of who to talk to. We have to keep in mind that there may be more than one person in each department that ends up needing to be talked to. And so when we submit that list to the mayor, as he suggested, we should say kind of what the information is that we want to gather so that, you know, we might speak to Wayne, because he's the staff to the Ag Commission. We may speak to Sarah LaBalle, who's the conservation officer, and she works with the Conservation Commission. So let's not lose sight of how much work this entails. Because if you guys are going to be doing some of these interviews separate from, you know, like a public process here, let's just think of who, you know, the potential places are. So there are four departments, maybe, or five departments, but it could end up being 10 people or something, you know.
And the question will be, do they want to come together or do they want to come separately? And I think that'll probably wind up being a decision of the department head, right?
Or some of them maybe could be people that are interviewed one-on-one versus coming to speak to us as a body.
So I, I think it would be helpful to have the different departments come to the meeting here and provide the testimony. And that, that our, what our role could be is, is contacting those departments and helping them prepare, you know, any, any of the que, you know, for any of the questions that we're going to ask, so that when they're here, they can be efficient. That, I, I think it's, I think it's important to hear from all of the departments in, in a public forum like this. That, that, you know, that our outreach is just to help them get prepared and let them know what it is we're looking for and what they can expect. That's, that's my thought.
Okay, that's very interesting. It looks like you want to say something.
Well, so exactly what are we looking for? Invoices, MSDS sheets? I think both of them. I mean, MSDS sheets, I'm trying to remember what the MS stands for, I can't, but I know DS stands for data sheet. And what it is, is all the data that's available for whatever chemical is, I mean, even soaps come with MSDS sheets. You know, usually it's part of the packaging slip on products.
It's material safety data sheet.
Yeah, okay. I remember half of it. But that is.
Material safety and protective.
So we want those kinds of things, I think, but we also want to have a conversation and a back and forth that's kind of about, what is the thinking behind this use? Why, you know, was this chosen as opposed to a less toxic management? I mean, I, I think that there's richness in conversation that will happen organically, no pun intended, at the same time as, you know, we need the cold hard data. And I think that's the balance of scientists here versus people who aren't scientists, is that, you know, there are different ways to process all the information that we want to gather, the different kinds of information.
Right. I guess I see inventory as number one. You can't do anything without inventory. You need to know what you're dealing with.
Great. I'm not, I'm not saying it's an either-or thing. I'm saying, you know, we want all of this.
And the question is, what's the most efficient way to get that information? My concern about having them come here as, to address the entire committee and the public is that scheduling is a problem and that we could wind up with many canceled meetings because, you know, of a forum. I'm also concerned that they may feel more intimidated coming in here where something's being filmed than they would sitting down with two people in, you know, their office maybe, having a back and forth conversation. So that, that's, that's my concern.
That makes sense in terms of efficiency, trying to get as much information as possible in a short amount of time that we're allotted, right? Have some interview. Unless we scheduled two for one meeting and had the information come to us ahead of time. Two departments, they have the information, they'll send it to us and present it, so we have some time to.
Yeah, and under open meeting law, what does it mean for them to send us the information? Who are they, are they sending it to? The whole committee? I guess that's okay, unless we don't discuss it.
Right, we can get the information.
And if it's the public record, we would bring it to, put it on the agenda of the meeting, it would need to be included so that it's public access. But you're right. What's the timeframe? When do we have to?
We have to have a report by November 10, is it?
Oh, I thought it was December. I, I was hoping December.
I thought it was October.
Wait a minute. We had our first meeting in July. When did we officially convene? Because it's five months from the date that we officially convene.
It was something like July 22nd.
So, so it would be five months from that to.
Well, we should, we, we should know right, right here from our minutes, right?
July 8th.
Oh, July 8th. So what is five months from July 8th?
December 8th.
December 8th. Okay. So I think we should have a draft report on, you know, early November. If we're going to have something to submit on in early December. So backing up from early November, that, that basically gives us 10 weeks from today, maybe 11. But, you know, we do have a couple holidays coming up, so it's 10 weeks. And we haven't, as part of our planning, we need to decide how often we're meeting. And so that's another thing that we could, we could decide that we're going to meet every two weeks. And that gives us more opportunities to have these folks come and address the entire committee if that's what the committee wants.
I'd like to say that I asked them that we need to meet every two weeks. And, you know, as long as we have a quorum, which is three out of five, we can proceed to meetings. And I would just like to add too, that I think that Jim has a really good point in terms of having people come and present to us, the, the staff people. It, it also ends up on the public rec, I mean, whatever notes you take from your meetings, if you have individual meetings, that would become public record too. But there is a certain power to having on public record, you know, a, a head of department coming and speaking to us and stating what's done. So there's a part of me that kind of is drawn to that model. So there's a part of me that kind of is drawn to that model, but I also want us to be efficient and I think it's a point well taken, Adelle, that, you know, you want as much ability to get real information for people and sometimes that happens much more in a one-on-one conversation. So it's kind of a little bit six and one, half a dozen of the other kind of thing in terms of what the outcomes are.
What if, let's think hypothetically here, what if one head of the department wanted, was aware of the fact that their official policies were really not being followed very well? I would imagine that that person would be reluctant to say that in this setting when everything's being recorded. What might be more likely to confide their concerns if they were meeting with the two of you quietly somewhere and say, you know, what we really need is to educate our employees better. But I can't imagine why they would want to say that here. So that's part of, you know, I'm wondering, you know, if we'll get full disclosure, if everything is just completely on the public record to the point of being recorded.
Yeah, I don't know how department heads feel on their day-to-day challenges and struggles working in the city. I just simply don't know. My sense is that if they're having, in this example, enforcement issue, I don't think they're going to go clean like that.
If I were head of the department, I don't think I would want to do that in a public forum.
Yeah, I don't know.
Our department heads are very savvy though and know that anything that they share will become public record, no matter how they share it, whether they do it in a public forum or in an interview that will become public information. That said, I think you're right. You know, you build a relationship with someone you're interviewing, as it were, talking to and so things maybe come out in particular ways. But I would bet that our department heads will be very careful in speaking even as a one-on-one kind of process.
I mean, what I hear is we don't have the staff. We don't have the staff to do this.
So my experience with department heads around pesticide use, I've had discussions with both Donna and with Rich Parisaletti and their answers are very detailed. They really are, they may not be doing exactly what we're trying to get to, but they are someplace, you know, their applications are thoughtful and in relationship to what the law allows. And, you know, what I'm anticipating with this discussion is we're going to push them, our hope is we can push them a little more towards, you know, using less chemicals and pesticides. And I think they're, they want to go that way. But I can tell you that, you know, that all of these department heads, that they've really thought about this and that, you know, if we bring Wayne in to talk about the use of Roundup on any of the conservation properties, I'm sure he can talk for 20 minutes about all of the different things that the city's gone through to arrive where they're at right now and probably has an idea of how to move forward too. So, yeah, I don't think that there's going to be anything on the down-low, you know, by us meeting with them in their offices that... Yeah, and like Alisa was sharing, they're very savvy. They know everything that they put out is, it's like city councilor emails. We know that this could end up all over the place.
Right. Front-page news. All right, well, shall we, shall we as a committee make a joint decision about how we want to interview the department heads? Whether we want to interview them separately, privately, or in a public setting during a committee meeting? So, do I need to phrase that as a, as something we vote on?
Like make a motion?
No, like make a motion.
Can you get a second?
Well, I'll make a motion that we, that we interview department heads here during our meetings.
I'll second that. I mean, this is funny because we've already had discussion here because it was on our agenda, but this is where we open it up at this point for discussion, as it were.
Well, we may not be doing it perfectly, but we are doing it in a very open fashion. More discussion from anyone who has strong feelings about this?
Well, I would like to add that the mayor's recommendation that we be clear about what it is we're asking first, you know, and then we provide that to people and that Cindy and I can be the contact person if people need further clarification. And, but that it's clear as to what it is they're being asked to do. And I would imagine a lot of this might be that they're going to print stuff up and bring it and say, we apply this, 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 you know, here you go. So, so putting together the questions ahead of time.
Absolutely. Okay, I would agree with that.
Just kind of logistically, then maybe what your roles could be is more like you say, defining what it is that needs to be discussed, not, but you won't actually be the one-on-one kind of interviewers, as it were. And I just, I also want to say like, we're not necessarily asking to talk to department heads as the mayor said, we're saying which departments we think we need to talk to and what we need covered and then they'll be internally figuring out who they would send to discuss the points. Not asking for department heads, but departments.
Right. But the vote on the floor is, do we want to do this during the full meeting?
Do you mean have people come in?
Yeah. So, do you have strong feelings about this, Kate? Do you want to contribute to the discussion?
I personally feel like it would be more efficient for us to interview the people. It's a, I guess I see it as just a matter of compiling that inventory which seems to me could be more readily obtained just by meeting based on the first, but it could be wrong. It's just an agenda, you know, just because we have such limited time.
And when we compile this list of questions that we want to ask that we provide them in advance, one of those things could be, we will need an inventory of every chemical that gets used and how much or where, you know, whatever it is you decide to put on your list. So they could bring the inventory along if they came here. What about, let me just want to throw out this point of this discussion, what about a friendly amendment? That we invite them to come to committee meeting, but if we're unable to get that scheduled within the next four weeks, that we set up individual appointments?
That sounds good.
Because I'm just worried it's going to go on and on and on.
I would amend the amendment just because there's Jim and I and that's two schedules. But if each one of us took a department, that might fast-track it if we decide to do one-on-one. Just a recommendation.
So it could be one or two of you. So if your schedule's melded, you could go together or not?
No, I didn't, I never thought we could. Did you?
Oh, you...
I was thinking we could.
Oh, okay. See, good to clarify. Well, that's interesting.
Well, two heads are always better than one.
They sure are, but wow, the schedule is... I don't know.
You know, I do have another discussion point. Oh, but the amendment, was the amendment official and we should be...
How do you make an amendment official? I'm not sure, clear on that?
You make the amendment, somebody seconds it and we have to discuss the amendment and get it off the floor before we go back to the bigger discussion.
Thank you. Still with the bigger discussion. So we have two amendments that were proposed, right?
Well, I think what we need to do, I'll second your amendment so we can discuss it and then Cindy can...
Wait, what was the amendment again?
That'd be a...
This needs to be recorded by...
A staged process. We invite them to come to a committee meeting, but if that's not turning out to be possible in a short timeframe, that we then schedule individual meetings. And then, I guess I could change it to with either, with either one or two of our committee members.
So I would like to speak to the amendment for doing discussion with you and that is that in our discussion, it's making, it's kind of making me think that what happens when you do a one-on-one interview, at the same time that there could be some richness there that would come out in a public talking, what gets lost, I think, is that you have one person maybe listening to, let's say Wayne Feiden talk, trying to keep notes and we just demonstrated how two people can hear the same thing and it gets translated in a different way in your brain and then you have to bring it back to the committee. There's a way in which I feel like this material that we're collecting is subject to open meeting law, it's something that the entire public should know. We should have it on record through recording and that's what kind of will give us the most, the truest, the most accurate information in a very particular way and accessible information as opposed to having individuals interviewing individual people, then keeping notes, then coming back to the committee and telling us what was said. There are so many stages in that process where information can get garbled or forgotten or missed. So the more we talk, the more I feel like, yes, I'm more than willing to go with this amendment that if there's no way to get somebody on time, you know, that an inter, in one-on-one interview happened, but I am feeling more strongly that it's important that we have people come and speak to us as a body and that it's recorded.
So that they have...
So that's strong preference. Yeah, so that's what I, like I said, I would support this amendment because I want to be practical, but I, my first preference is to have people come in here scheduled for the whole room.
Which was the original motion?
Yes.
If I can go back into that tracking, original motion.
Thank you. Do you have who made it, who seconded it?
Yeah, Jim and you, first and second, and then we moved to the discussion which gave us another amendment from Adelle. And we're on discussion of that amendment. You indicated you want to go back to ours.
No, that comment that I just made was fixing this amendment discussion. Other...
So it's like we're creating a safety valve should we not be able to bring people in. And I'm fine with that, but I do, you know, based on what the mayor shared and if we provide enough opportunities for people to show up, I think that Lynn can fill up that schedule, so. I'm hoping we don't need to.
I hope so too. It sounds, you convinced me that it's better to have them come here.
All departments?
All four.
As opposed to a one-on-one?
As opposed to starting out with, just trying to schedule one-on-one meetings or two-on-one meetings or two-on-two meetings or whatever. Okay, so I think we have to vote on the, first to vote on the amendment, then vote on the original motion, is that right? Oh, this is so hard for me. All in favor of the amendment?
Could you, well, I'll state what I think it is?
Oh, good.
Or maybe, I'm not sure I have it though.
That's good.
The amendment is to stage the process with one-on-one interviews. And if that scheduling doesn't work, move to having the department heads come to it.
Oh, it's the other way around. Okay. So, first priority is to have, invite the department heads and their representatives to come to a committee meeting, our committee meeting, and give, and testify. And that we would provide questions in advance. And that if that becomes impossible within a month, to schedule that we would...
Do individual...
Do individual interviews with one or two of our committee members going, meeting with whoever the department head doesn't pick.
And that's the amendment to the amendment, correct?
I think it's an amendment to the motion.
Yeah, it's an amendment to the motion.
If they don't, if we don't get their information within a month?
Just if we're not able to schedule it?
What was the original, what was the original motion? Could you...
To interview the department heads during the R...
Together.
Ah, okay, so then the amendment is just that if that doesn't work within four weeks, within four weeks, or before the end of September, that then we would go to a different process of scheduling interviews of one or two to the other person.
That's the stream I'm like.
And so we have to come up with the questions?
Yeah, first we have to vote on the amendment.
Oh, sorry.
Then we have to vote on the motion. Okay.
I need a first and second to this one.
Oh, we already had that. She made the amendment and Jim seconded it.
I'm sorry.
This is, this is...
This is the most challenging part of this work.
Parliamentary procedure is really intense.
You have to be a lawyer.
And you know what, everybody should have a Rob, you know, Robert's Rules of Order book in their life if you want to wrap one in here. Oh, is that for us?
Maybe we should all go there. Okay, so now let's vote on this amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone standing aside? Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. And then let's vote on the motion, which is to invite the departments to come talk to us at a committee meeting.
As amended.
As amended, thank you. Oh, this could kill a person.
Yes.
You're doing great.
Yeah, you are. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone standing aside? Anyone opposed? Okay, we've passed that. So, related to that plan, we need to determine what questions we're going to provide to them in advance and what dates are we going to offer them?
So we have to come up with our meeting dates.
So I would suggest we come up with a plan for our meetings between now and the beginning of November so that we can then work from there.
Just on the point of the procedure, we do have to acknowledge public comment, I think, on the agenda.
Yes. Okay, so... Yes, okay. There was, no one from the public showed up for public comments, so that's taken care of. And then we have moved item nine forward. So we're actually doing item nine now. And then we're going to move into six, seven, and eight. Okay?
Item nine being review of committee members on the...
Yes, because this, to me, this comes under plans. I forgot to put on the agenda, schedule in future meetings, but it seems like that's... We just have to send it to the part of planning. Is it, I suggest that we meet every two weeks and then if we decide that we don't need to meet that often, we can always drop back. But we're on a very tight timeframe. We have 10 weeks to produce a draft report. So, what, does anyone have a strong objection to meeting every two weeks? Good, no one's objecting. Okay, so, and two weeks from today, of course, is Labor Day, so that's not going to work.
Today is not Monday.
Today's not Monday.
Today's...
You know, you're right. Today is not Monday. Today's Thursday. Two weeks from today is September 5th. I will not be back yet from Labor Day holiday.
How about after that weekend?
How about...
Will you be back on Friday, the 6th? If we try to do two weeks?
I will not be. But we could do, I would be back Monday, I'm going the wrong direction here, Monday, the 9th.
Works for me, the 9th.
Me too.
10 a.m.?
Works for me.
How about you? Okay, so that's, okay, Monday, the 9th, 10 a.m. Okay, so then, do we want to continue a pattern of meeting on Mondays?
Sure.
And then the next Monday would be the 23rd? And then the next Monday, uh, will be the 23rd. It's two weeks.
Skipper. One, 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 skipper.
What'd you say?
She was one of Barbie's Barbie's niece.
Sorry.
It's our initials.
Committee on Pesticide Reduction is S C P R. So we're the skipper commission. Maybe we could come up with a better name.
I like that. I kind of like that too.
Kind of jaunty. All right, so then we have October 7th. Does that, does that sound good to people? Okay, and then there's October 21st. Oh, excellent, we're gonna, we're skipping over the week of Columbus Day, which is good.
And Yonk Porhern.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not going to have any of those conflicts. Monday, the 21st. All right. And then November 4th.
Can't be this easy. No way.
How about Monday, November 4th? That's happens to be my birthday. We could celebrate.
Oh, sweet. I'll get you a roundup paint. You think they make those at Carvel?
I bet there, I bet there is roundup in that Carvel paint. Okay, so that's on November 4th. And then, and November 18th. December 2nd. So that by then we should be done, right? It, uh, report is due then, uh, that week, so theoretically, well, we, why don't we go ahead and say that we could meet, uh, December 16th if if we had a need to for some reason? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Are we doing the 2nd too? December 2nd?
Yes. Okay, so when we contact the mayor's office, we would be asking people to come between 10 and 12, department, departmental people, between 10 and 12 on September 9th and September or September 23rd. Correct?
Yes. Okay. So it sounds like matrix we have to create so that we can fit the people in because we've got more than one person.
How much time do you think we want with each department we have? Did we say, we said four departments, right? It, well, that didn't include the schools, but so let's let's be optimistic and say five.
I'm just wondering though, we haven't developed a list yet. And the best scenario, scenario of questions, it would be developed today. And it goes to the mayor's office and then it goes to the department heads. So September 9th might be ambitious particularly if we have a long list of things to produce, but we can give a shot.
Well, I think the questions we want to ask are embedded in the resolution itself and but they're not, I mean, some are worded as questions, but, um, I think we need to take a little time to tease out what the actual, I mean.
Training for the resolution.
The committee shall study and evaluate the city's current management of turf conservation areas and other municipal green space, particularly around schools and other locations where children play. So, you know, there there's a question right there. Alternatives to pesticide use, including but not limited to integrated pest management and organic management. So right there, there's two questions that there's within that that I think we want to ask city staff. Policies and practices from other jurisdictions to reduce pesticide use. I think that's where our research is going to come in. Estimated cost as well as potential grants instead of programs. I think that is, um, but I think that's a question that, um, we may want to ask city staff of what they're aware of. Recommended benchmarks with respect to the goal of achieving an overall reduction in the use of pesticides consistent with sound pesto- pesticide, pest management practices. So, and I think that's another question that we want to say, where are you going? What's, you know, um, so. And then there was, we had, we defined pesticide in here.
It's the footnote on the first page and it's, that needs to be supplied everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
We're talking about the whole, for purposes of this resolution, as guided by the National Association of State Department of Agriculture Research Foundation, the term pesticide includes insecticides, herbicides, fungicides, rhodenticides, and other toxins designed to manage or regulate plant growth. Pests are defined as undesirable plants, insects, fungi, bacteria, rodents, birds, and other animals. So we can copy that onto our, whatever we submit to the mayor's office for him to share, I think, with the, with all the questions that we develop. I think that's really important because otherwise we can have people. I mean, I also just find everyone trips over that, like, oh, that's an herbicide, not as, this, the term pesticide is now being used as an umbrella term for all of those. So just very important to make that clear. Yes. But I think Jim has a point. I mean, I I think we want to ask for the M S D M, whatever they call it.
Ask for those sheets.
M S D S sheets.
And that includes how they're applied, you said, or how they're supposed to be.
No, it's it's down sheet, so it's about the chemicals specifically.
So we also want to ask them how they're applied, so that's a very technical question. And then just the broader kind of terms here that Jim just read that are here, you know, what the current practices are. Well, could we break it down into questions like what, after the definition, what pesticides are in use by by the department?
Please supply it, M S D A sheets.
Supply invoices and M S D S.
Sheets, yeah. Method of application.
How much is used each year? Where and how is it applied? Um, to what extent are are organic or I P M methods used? What else?
Yeah, organic, that's kind of a squishy term. Has a lot of meanings. I P M.
What about I P M?
Well, that's a.
Uh, I guess, um, integrated pest management, actually, they're in the organic community. I just went to the NOFA conference this, uh, two weekends ago. Is I P M has become kind of anathema in the organic community because it's used, um, as a way to kind of justify pesticide use by many applicators and managers of turfs. So, um, the organic community is now off of the concept of I P M and I wrote this before, I was aware of that, but that's just an aside. Well, why don't we, um, use the word organic but but define it, um, or or explain it better so it's not too big. It's a, um, to what extent are I P M methods used? Uh, to what extent are methods used that are approved by, um. Or less, less toxic methods. I mean, I know from talking to Rich Parsaleti, for instance, that he has taken the initiative to apply, um, I forget what it is, something for grub management that is considered non-toxic. And it's not necessarily an organic per se procedure, but it's certainly less toxic. So I think we want to have some open-ended questions that are like, what are the things that you've put in place to reduce pesticide use or something like that? Uh, I think it's okay to create some open-ended questions too because it'll allow people to kind of talk through things and that might, I don't know if you're making a face because it's not as scientific, but.
It's not, it's not a simple issue.
Clearly.
Because in my head, I keep thinking, well, boric acid is a very effective pesticide for fleas, but use boric acid as an eye wash. So when you talk about toxic, you know, like not every pesticide is toxic and, well, different.
So I I want us to be really careful. I think it's really important that we have scientists here and I'm really grateful that you're willing to do this, but I also think that we're talking about kind of broad policy. So there's only so much level of kind of granular information that we necessarily need on this committee. I think you're right, Adele, that we have to set benchmarks, so you need to know where you're coming from. But I don't think that our, we're not, this isn't a scientific committee per se and I don't feel like we need to to get really specific about what the effects are and what the effects aren't of every single thing that's used. I think we have to think more broadly or we're going to get bogged down and we're not going to be able to move forward with making recommendations. So I just want us to be really careful that we're thinking, um, we're thinking about that and we're not, we're not going too broad, but we're also not getting too granular because that will, one, we're not equipped to do that and two, it will keep us from doing what we're going to ultimately try and do, which is make some broad recommendations for how the city starts to do things differently to reduce pesticides. What if we use a general term when we're asking the question like, what, um, what efforts have you made to use less toxic methods? And then the follow-up question would be, because then then they'll say, oh, well, we've tried this, this, and this, or we go with this first, and then we can say, well, what exactly is that? So we're, we would, um, what they consider less toxic, maybe you wouldn't consider less toxicate, you or or, you know, vice versa. So, uh, but but we would still be getting the information.
Right.
So we could ask the question less to- as less toxic, then we then we follow up with, and so what were those things that you used and how were they applied and when? And then we make our own determination whether we think they were less toxic or not.
So would, so would boric acid be used around turf or conservation area?
Oh, I just used it once in a house I lived in.
Right.
So it's just an example. It's not something that we would be expecting to show.
So it's like even for killing off roaches or an infestation of insects.
Fleas is.
Well, that was in your case, but but it might be, I I don't know if the city uses it anywhere, but.
I don't either. Right, that's why the inventory is number one, right?
Right.
So what we're trying to get at is what's being used.
Exactly.
And I think that part of what we're doing in here is that by limiting things to turf and conservation areas that we're not going to get into, I don't think we're going to get into things used in bathrooms and buildings and things like that, um.
Well, I I'm not sure in the schools, it's possible to be.
Right.
I don't know. I I don't know. We're talking about pesticides, you know, with that broad definition broadly and we we, I think we've been thinking about it in terms of like turf and green spaces. But yeah, that's a question we have to answer. We're talking about internal chemicals, but only if they're not, not cleaning materials because we're talking about pesticides. Well, you know, if they have a rat problem in the schools, are they putting out rat poison?
Right, right.
I mean, there's there's one thing we're going to.
Right, exactly.
Right, right. Um, and and if so, how are they putting it out and where is it going and how much are they using, et cetera? And actually, the cleaning materials, though, that is something that I I've talked to people on the school committee about their thinking about too, about, um, addressing that. So that's a whole other topic. Yeah, because they're very toxic materials that are used.
So do we want to go there to start looking at buildings as opposed to just grounds?
I I would suggest we, when it comes to killing pesticides, if we're killing creatures, yes, we want to know that.
Okay.
That is highly toxic.
Oh, I agree. I I up to now, I've just been thinking.
Grounds.
Properties, like, you know, and not the interiors of buildings.
Yeah. Yeah. Little did you know. Cindy, were you able to get the questions as.
I I have a list, but we keep changing, so I don't want to, uh.
Because I think I liked where you went, Adele, with the questions, the beginning of the question. Okay, so what pesticides are in your, in use in your department? Um, how much is used each year? Where are they applied and how are they applied? If possible, we would like to have copies of invoices and M S D S for each chemical. And then we said, I think what we are now talking about is to what extent, um, is your department using methods that you consider to be less toxic? Or in an effort to use less toxic products? What are the products and how are they used and where? It is interesting, I'm just going, I'm afraid I have to do this, just go back to what Jim brought up about stuff used, um, in buildings because the, um, mandate of the resolution that formed this group says specifically the city's management of turf, conservation areas, and other municipal green space. So it doesn't talk about used inside buildings. I don't know if that necessarily means we can't add that, but I think we have to be explicit in our question asking if we decide that's what we're doing. Just because it's not in the mandate of the resolution. So in my opinion, that would be particularly relevant in the schools. So that would be something that we would reserve for the s- the school department, I would think.
Oh, it could be one of those things we hand off that in terms of, you know, while we're interviewing people, we could ask them, you know, are there pesticides used within the school, in the cafeteria, you know, around food preparation, things like that? And, you know, they could provide us with the answers and then we could provide recommendations to the school department. Because.
We're going to have to hand off everything to the school department.
Right.
Oh, I see what you mean by handoff. Yeah, I, yeah. Or, or to the board of health.
Or to the board.
But that's way in the future.
So there may be a way we can go there that's within, because we're going to, we're going to have findings as we go. I mean, we're investigating and we're learning things and so we're learning things about other uses and we can therefore make recommend. I feel comfortable making safety recommendations outside of that.
Okay. Do we want to have a why question anywhere? And the reason I'm asking that is because I'm thinking about the conservation areas that are managed with roundup that the city council approves, uh, Community Preservation Act funds to purchase. You know, I've had a number of discussions with Sarah LaValle, who's the conservation agent and for the city and the people who use it, the broader coalition in particular. Um, and they talk about all the other things they tried that didn't work, the fact that it's on, you know, in Fitzgerald Lake and they can't use goats or any of the other methods. So I think some of that, that why have you turned to or why are you using? How about what factors, um, influence your decision about whether to use a pesticide? Yeah.
I think that's a good point because there's this, um, neighborhood off of South Street that, um, if anybody lives. No.
Oh, neighborhood.
South Street. Um, you know, like Columbus Avenue.
Uh-huh.
That there's a, there is a strong group of people who've come to the board of health because it's near, this is out of my view, the Meadows.
Mm-hmm.
And the mosquito population is crazy. You could just go into town and you're fine, you go in. So, so this question, the why question, that's going to influence the decision when you have citizens complaining.
When you decide it's official.
So, yeah, for a lot of reasons.
I used to live in that neighborhood and it was insane.
Was it?
Yeah.
I can't believe it.
You literally couldn't walk from your door to your car without like getting mosquito bites.
Oh, wow.
So.
Not moving to that neighborhood.
So we have questions, but Jim proposed some earlier things to be taken out of the charge.
Well, let's see if they're covered in the list.
The charge. When we send questions to them.
What's in the charge is exactly what, um, Adele expressed in her. I don't say any harm in including the, uh, city council resolution along with the definition of pesticide and then the specific questions that we're going to ask.
Okay.
So, sound okay to everybody else?
Not making a motion or anything, just asking.
Could you read through the list of questions again? And I wanna just like, in terms of what we're asking there, and then what's in the, the resolution, I wanna make sure we're covering.
Let's have you read it.
I guess yours and mine's are gonna go in a minute.
And just a question, what, what's the value added to the invoices? Because that could be a nightmare. What's the value added to include invoices?
The mayor should just do that.
Just a list, you know, just, you have to pick it out, but it's just a list of what was ordered.
What, what was purchased.
Yeah. But, um, isn't that covered with the MSDS? Cause we have to be specific what kind of invoices we're looking for, or what.
But at the same time, yeah, I guess MSDS sheets could be anything, cause soap that goes in the consent or comes in MSDS sheet, you know, so it's one or the other.
It's fine, I mean, yeah. Well, the invoice would tell us how much, right?
Correct.
And an MSDS sheet wouldn't.
No.
And I think we wanna know how much as well, because what was the, what was ordered, but how much of it? I mean, if it's a miniscule quantity...
Oh, quantity versus price.
Qua, yeah, we wanna know the quantity.
Do you not know how much it's applied, or how long it lasts, though?
We don't, we wouldn't know how much was actually used, it could be sitting on the shelf. But at least we know how much it was purchased, right?
Yeah, it just might, that might be the thing that, though, like, oh, God, I gotta get that? It's gonna take me longer. I don't know, I don't know how invoicing is to the city.
I don't either.
Well, I think that could be an area where, when we're talking to the departments, is it, I mean, the core of what we want is how much and how often it's used. We, you know, I, we don't, I don't feel like I need to see, you know, July 1st, we bought, you know, five cans of hornet spray, you know? But I do wanna see that over a year, we've been buying the hornet spray, and we've used it at these locations, um...
Right.
So how do they wanna report it?
It's not good.
I'm sorry, would it just...
Is that work orders, would give you that information?
You know, we might just ask the department people, though.
And we'd most efficiently like that.
I feel like we need to be careful, one, that we're not, um, overwhelming people, we're not putting them off this process. I mean, I want us to also be sensitive to the fact that these are the people that ultimately we're gonna be making recommendations to and wanting them to carry out. I mean, I, I just think, I don't think so. We don't wanna make enemies in this process, we don't wanna aggravate people. That's not, not a good method.
Well, we could start out with a question of asking them how much is used and when. Um, and then if we want more detail, we could say, how much trouble would it be for you to actually provide us with the invoices if we wanted to, you know, tally it up?
But that doesn't really tell you which is used or when, right?
No, but we would be asking them that, and, and, but that might be perceived as a friendly request. And then, could you please provide all your invoices? And then, but we could always follow up with a request for invoices, right? And, but we could even explain to them in person why we would be asking for that, so that it doesn't seem quite so offensive.
I, I, I want us to be really mindful that we're not a tribunal, and that we're not, we're also not a scientific committee, um, and that we're kind of trying to get at a, a broad picture, more than like go deep into specifics. So, yeah, I, I think we have to strike a good balance here between, you know, being credible and creating benchmarks, but also keep them broad enough that we're not creating some completely onerous new system for the city.
Well, then, we could just start out with these general questions, not asking the invoices or the MSDS. Um, and then if we decide later that we really need those, we can go back to them in as friendly a way as possible and ask for it, but we would then have had a whole process and discussion about whether we really need to do that and why.
Except I think MSDS is, my memory is, they're, they're housed in one place.
Correct.
So I don't think that's gonna be hard. Let's hope they're in house somewhere.
The only difference, I thought it would be going through them and seeing which ones are relevant.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think, it's the invoices that I would be, like, that might be just a little much, because we're already asking how much is used each year, we can say each month, each, whatever.
And, you know, when we talk to central services, they may have, they may even be able to tell us how much we spent on X, Y, or Z. I don't know, we'll see.
So I can read these and see if they match yours, kind of? Decide if we want invoices left in, whether MSDS is left in or not. What I have is what pesticides are used in your department? How much is used each year?
Locations.
On where and how are they applied? Copies of MSDS and invoices for each chemical? To what extent is your department, you, well, to what extent is your department making an effort to be less toxic?
To use less toxic...
To, to use...
Less toxic substances.
To use less toxic...
I would at least provide examples or something like that.
Uh, all right, so Kate is suggesting less pesticide.
Less pesticide?
Yeah, and...
As opposed to toxic?
Right, just less pesticides without making a judgment.
Yeah.
Although just the word, it's fewer, was the assessment.
And what are the, what are these products, and how are they used and where is part of that? And finally, what factors influence your decision on whether or not to use a pesticide?
I would just wanna add, um, under the question about, to what extent is your department, please provide some relevant examples or something like, cause it was just very elucidating for me to hear as an example of why I want this from Rich Parsaliti, some of the things that he has put in place, cause it makes me realize in a very concrete way how he's been thinking about it, and what he, what steps he's taken. So just to provide, please provide some examples or something.
Examples of what steps you're taking, please?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll put it under that, so...
Yes.
Um, but we did, we've already said that we were gonna ask them what they were using.
Pesticides, pesticides indirectly.
You know, in terms of, um, to what extent is your department trying to use less pesticide? And then the follow-up was what is being used and where, right? So how is that different from what you said, given you just want some examples? I mean, cause we're asking them what, what are they, what are they using?
Oh, so it's the question after, to what extent...
To what extent is your department using less pesticides? What are the products, and how are they used and where?
The proper grammar, fewer pesticides, not less pesticides.
Okay. To what extent is...
Or less pesticide.
That's true, it's pesticide, you can say less.
I may not know Robert's rules, but...
You know grammar. I'm a professional editor too, though, so that's...
What are those products, and how are they used and where? And then you wanted to...
What are those products, how are they used and where? No, because it's not always products.
Okay. Okay, so like management techniques sometimes are not product based.
Oh, just chrono slash techniques.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
So do you still wanna add, give a few examples? And, um, and I think we're striking the MSDS and invoices.
We're striking the whole thing?
No, just, just, just the invoice, just that, those two words from the previous question. Are we?
Question is, or the request is, provide copies of MSDS and invoices for each chemical.
Okay, so, so that's a whole, that's a whole separate item. Okay, so do we still wanna ask for the MSDS, but not the invoices?
I would defer to Kate on that, because I don't, I don't...
That's not gonna be easy for them to get together. I mean, I guess at this point, we're trying not to aggravate anybody, right?
Well, we could, maybe, could we soften it by saying, if it's feasible on this short turnaround time, please provide a set of MSDS for the pesticide you use?
Yeah, that would be...
And or receipts? Might actually be easier for them to, I don't know.
But it's a, it's an OSHA requirement.
What is?
MSDS.
Okay.
If they don't have...
They have to keep it on file.
Or not know where, yeah.
Okay, well, that, I think, yeah.
So the question is what our goal in having them is, that, that would be my way of deciding to do it.
I have, yeah.
Because it's, you know, it's a lot, it's just gonna prove to us that there are lots and lots of chemicals, but, you know, are we a scientific company that needs to know exactly what everything is, is the question.
Well, no, but we need a list of what's being used, okay? That's where, that's our starting point. We might say, or might, one of our recommendations might be, I don't know, but it might be, gee, don't use any more of that, you know? Um, there's, there's something less toxic available, um, that you could replace this with, I don't know.
We have that.
No?
Cause beyond us.
That's beyond us, okay, well then, strike that idea.
So my thought would be, we could ask them questions, ask a question about, um, how do you, how do you keep track of your MSDS documents, you know? Describe that system, you know? Because that opens to, to the question of like, oh, yeah, they're gonna ask about that. Where do we keep those things? You know, that, um, and I, I'm, I'm hoping they've already got this, it's well thought through, and there's a file cabinet somewhere with all of this stuff for any of these departments, but that, um, that is a softer way of putting, just letting them know, we're, we're interested in knowing how they're tracking, you know, how are they keeping important information here?
So what would be a soft way to ask that question?
Describe how you store the, you know, describe how you track MSDS documents and related to, um, the pesticides that we use.
Or do they have MSDS sheets for all the pesticides that they use?
That's true.
I mean, they should have them. So maybe that's not the question, do you have that?
I mean, if it's an OSHA...
Are they accessible?
If it's an OSHA requirement, then they're gonna know that, and they're gonna say, oh, I better say, yes, we're tracking those, but the question is not, are you, do you have them? Because they have to have them, right?
Are they accessible?
Yeah, like, who has access? How would that be, would that be a softer way of saying, who has access to your MSDS documents?
Describe the system, you know, how does this work for your department? You know, somebody's out in a field applying something, they, you know, accidentally spray stuff in their face, how did they get the information as to what they should be doing to take care of themselves? You know, do they know who to call? You know, should they be near an eyewash station? I, I, I don't know, but...
Well, that, and that is a different question than where, you know, how do you track your MSDS documents?
But wouldn't those documents say...
But the person out in the field who sprays their eyeball isn't gonna care where the MSDS documents are stored or what...
They're probably not, they're gonna look and flood it.
They're gonna... I'm not sure it's the jurisdiction of this committee either. What their kind of administrative processes around their pesticide use is. I don't know what, how that furthers our goal of creating new policies about pesticide use reduction, and that's, that's the thing that I always wanna keep clear for us.
It is true, if anything, the MSDS sheets are valuable for the toxicity of the chemical, and that's something you can readily find on the internet, a lot more readily than maybe going through their files and their MSDS sheets. Cause they have, they'll have them on everything.
Okay, so what we really wanna find out is what are they using and how much?
Right.
And, and so now we're saying, well, the MSDS sheets aren't really gonna give us that information, so why ask for it?
If anything, the receipts would be more relevant, and the question is, is that something that's really onerous to ask them to produce?
And that's something we could ask them in person, rather than them thinking, oh, I better bring all those invoices with me. We could just casually, when they're here, say, how difficult would it be for you to provide us data from your invoices?
But that wouldn't be a question in advance.
Right, right, and then some people might, you know, maybe they say, oh, well, central services has all that information, you know, no problem, versus somebody might say, you know, oh, my God, I don't know, that would be a huge headache, and then we would factor that into whether we were gonna ask them for it. To me, that would be a friend, a friend of your way, how much trouble would it really be? I don't know, what do you guys think?
That makes more sense.
So what? I'm worried that we only have fifteen minutes left, and I really think we need to talk about how we're gonna get the public involved, cause people have been contacting me, I'm sorry to...
You're right, you're right, and thank you for looking at the time.
Well, I think we're almost done with these questions. I, I'm fine withdrawing the MSDS question as well as the invoice question for now, you know?
Okay.
And I, I would agree, but I'm just wondering who we could call in the city that can tell us where they're from?
I think we could ask someone from central services.
Yeah, maybe in the process of, uh...
That would be, uh...
Because today, I wash comment, I just went through the MSDS sheets, and they do, everyone for every chemical has got to have a first aid procedure, and so that's important for employees. And how do you protect your employees?
But we, you know, we're not OSHA, right? And we don't wanna be perceived as being OSHA, so, but...
So striking...
So that could, maybe that's a question we just forward to the mayor and to Lynn in terms of what did, what's our overall policy around managing, you know, MSDS sheets and, um, and training for using pesticides all over the city, you know, within any departments?
Training?
Except that, see, I really don't agree with that, I have to say, because I think that we're getting into city staff procedural issues, we're not talking policy anymore. And what we're doing at this committee is we're trying to shift policy and culture around pesticide use broadly. If, it's, I think it's really inappropriate for a city council committee, because of separation of powers, to be asking about what the, you know, where things are stored, processes, that, those kinds of processes are, um, internal staff issues, executive branch issues, because the executive branch oversees city staff, that's not what city council does.
You just wanna know what pesticides are used.
Yeah, how much is being used.
What, how much, where, what, how much.
And where can we recommend reductions?
All right, I'm letting go of it, thank you for the pushback.
So will, will we move the MSDS request and the invoice request off of the list? Is that all?
Okay.
Yeah.
And we can tease out anything we need to tease out when people are actually here, so we have that opportunity. This isn't beyond end, all this list of questions.
Right, right. As, as we perceive, we may come up with more, more interesting things may come out of these conversations, maybe adding questions. Um, is it okay with everybody if we move on?
Yes.
So, um, we want to get...
Do we know the process, though, how this is gonna, are you, you as chair or vice chair or whatever, just submitting this to the mayor, our list of places?
Um, yes, I will submit this list of questions to the mayor's office along with the two dates that we're offering and the two times, and ask, um, for each department to send someone who can address these questions within a thirty-minute timeframe.
And departments?
And departments will be? The departments will be, um, central services, planning and sustainability...
Slash conservation, just so that it's clear that we wanna talk about pesticide use in the conservation areas.
The, um...
Health department.
Yeah, health department.
Central services plan.
Oh, DPW, DPW.
And then the school.
And then the school system, yeah, so if possible. Yeah. So we're inviting five, and we're asking them each for half an hour. Shall we say, shall we say thirty to forty-five minutes?
Per person?
Well, per department. Department might send two different people, or three, I suppose. I think that's good.
Yeah, and if we have two meetings to do this, and our meetings are two hours, half an hour, I think it's... Up to half an hour, we will ask them to speak up to half an hour, I would say. We will ask them to speak up to half an hour, I would say.
Up to, up to 30 minutes, including, including back and forth?
I just don't think we have time, we don't do, accomplish everything, we don't do the framework.
Okay.
I mean, oh, although we have two meetings. So we have four half hour slots, as it were, but then we have other things that we have to talk about too in our meetings.
Right.
But that doesn't leave any more questions, does it?
Well, I, I guess we're not going to just ask them to talk for the half an hour, we're going to say, we're going to be asking these kinds of questions.
If I was asking them to talk for 10 minutes and then reserve for us our questions. We also have to be prepared to call for them, five of them, say, I'm on the 20th. You know, I tend to push it out.
Well, if we present it to them as a matrix, they're going to have to fill it in. Who can do it?
Right.
Is there application?
Yeah. Okay.
So my, DPW, I think is probably going to need more time. Because you have highways, levees, forest parks, cemeteries. Yeah, so I, I think they, and they have a lot of different things that they're overseeing. So I, I think whenever we schedule DPW, we probably want to allot a little more time.
Okay, so let's say 45 for DPW and then similarly, if we have the schools, it seems to me that should be 45 minutes, right?
Absolutely.
The Health Department, 30, which should be sufficient, right? Because it's mostly about mosquitoes. What was the other? Oh, Central Services and Planning.
Central Services, yeah. I know that, yeah, I'm not entirely sure of all of what to do.
Well, we're going to find out, or a little more anyway.
You know, I think Jim made a good point in, just when he named the DPW oversight pieces. I actually would like us to include that in our invitation, those, so that they know that we want to know about, what are, what's your list?
Highway, levees, forest, parks, cemeteries.
And.
Bike path.
But that's, that's.
It's probably.
Water, green space.
That's probably the DPW.
So under parks, does parks, I guess parks includes athletic fields and bike path?
I would break it down and say, definitely athletic fields.
You can call it.
Turf management too. And then under the Planning and Sustainability, I'd like to have it broken down to Conservation, Agriculture. What else do they oversee that is relevant?
Yeah, so ConsCon is going to be overseeing, you know, different conservation areas that will involve forests, streams.
Watershed. Watershed would be DPW.
Yeah, the watershed, oh yeah, watershed.
I mean, we could just say, we would like to discuss, you know, these areas, something like that, management of these areas.
Okay. All right, so, you know, we might. Okay. Well, yeah, we might need more than 45 minutes for DPW.
We have four departments, we could say, we have 45 minutes for each.
Well, we don't need 45 for Health, the Health Department, I think. Central Services, we don't really know. We're going to find out what the heck they know.
Or they are.
I suppose they would know how the city buildings are treating, you know, like, did they, rodents and all that stuff. I assume, right? All right, so.
They also make, they're responsible for procurement, I would imagine.
Yeah, so they might have all sorts of information, more than we think. Okay, so we, we really have to move on to talk about how we, are we okay with moving on?
Yeah, I think we covered it well, I feel confident that we have the right information.
I'm also looking at the remaining items in the time and I'm wondering if these really have to be addressed today, but I don't know.
Well, I'd like to take a stab at it anyway. Because we do need to start letting people know that we want to hear from them. Do we want to have them, do we want to invite the public to our regular meetings? Do we want to hear from the public and, and from experts during our regular meetings? Or do we want to have separate sessions for them? And to me, that's a, that's a major decision, and we might be able to make that.
Well, I think the public kind of breaks down to different, I mean, every, every meeting is always a public meeting. Anybody can come and offer a public comment. There were a couple of things that I had in mind with this agenda item. One is, do we want to do proactive outreach by having our chair, at least sign a letter that would go to the Gazette that says, you know, we're meeting regularly, these are the dates for meeting, you know, we welcome the public to come to our public comment period at the beginning of every meeting, just so that we're kind of doing our due diligence, letting people know there's this new committee, it's up and running, please come. So that's one of the things I wanted to ask about. And then the other one, the public refers to members, not members, people in the community who submitted applications to be a member of this board that were not chose, this committee, that weren't chosen, but that do have significant expertise. And we would like to acknowledge that by inviting them to come and speak to us, not just during public comment, but with a slot allotted to them. And a few of those members that we had talked about were Richard Jaskey from the ConsCon,
Bernadette.
Bernadette Gidlin, who is an organic turf management person known throughout the Northeast. Len Cohen, who's also a retired chemist who was recommended by the Broadbrook Coalition. Bob Zimmerman from the Broadbrook Coalition, really would like, he's written to me a couple of times, would like to come and address us. And then just to brainstorm some of those other kinds of folks and also look at the applicants and see if there's somebody else that we would really like to acknowledge and have them speak to us. So that's what I had in mind for that agenda topic.
So do we, I mean, I am totally in favor of all of the above, but the question is, do we want to invite them to come to meetings and give them us a speaking slot? Or do we want to invite them to come to a special session to give their testimony? Those are.
Like to do a public hearing, is it, or like a public?
Exactly.
Yes.
Have a separate public hearing. And probably do that. Invite them to one of these meetings that we just scheduled.
I like the public hearing idea.
How's that different?
With hearing, with hearing. You invite people to speak and they come up, we can even limit the time. And we, I mean, I, I've seen it both ways, you're not supposed to engage, or is that just public comment? You can set the rules however you want, is there a back and forth?
Everywhere, really?
You know, so, a hearing is publicly announced that way, there's nothing on the agenda. Adele would open it, we're opening the public hearing, you know, and we can't talk about anything in the other agenda.
The city council doesn't technically call them hearings because they're technically different. We would call it a public forum.
A meeting.
Yeah, do it in the evening and people have more time to come and speak. And you can do it with invited people and have public comment as well for anybody else. But you can also invite people for slots of time, but you designate how long they are.
So these are all issues that we'll address once we get the list of what we're dealing with, correct? Pretty much?
I don't want to.
It's probably not going to happen in September, right? Because we've got, I guess, so many, so much work done.
Right, all these people we're talking about to come and give evidence or information would be information we'll be dealing with once we know which chemicals we're dealing with.
I don't think necessarily, I think it's just an opportunity for people to share their expertise broadly.
Well, knowing some of these people and what their concerns are, I think that they just, they're just going to want to give their opinion about pesticides and the alternatives. And.
Is that what, because I don't, I've heard of the people, but I don't know what they're going to bring to this committee. What are they going to bring?
You mean in terms of, are we selescing them to provide written material as well?
I don't know what we're, I know, I know, it's, the initiative to let the public speak and concern people is wonderful. But are these people that have a particular expertise?
In general, they are.
Some of them are definitely. That can tell us.
The ones that I mentioned who were applicants, yes. But then there are the people like the community gardens people who have had this battle going on around Roundup use. Want a public platform other than just public comment. I mean, this is, I think we need more time to flesh out exactly who we would invite, but.
Okay, so what we could do today is agree in principle, I would like to make a motion that we agree in principle that in October, we're going to host some public forums in which we invite specific people to testify and submit written documents as well as any general, members of the general public who would like to.
I'll second that.
So in, maybe in our, in our next meeting, we can flesh that out a little more? All right, so I guess that was a motion, excuse me. Discussion?
So I just.
I'll second.
Oh, I thought you already said it.
Oh, you already did.
But I just want to make sure, in October, we will host a public forum to invite specific people to present.
Present, present their, their, relevant information.
Relevant information?
In oral and written form as they wish.
Could we maybe at least set a date now? Chair, because that would help me make sure that I don't pick up all the October evenings and bury it packed.
Uh, yeah, so I guess we, we would, in the motion, we'd be an evening in October, how's that?
But is the full public, like the community garden people?
Yes, we'd be inviting specific people as well as the general public.
Specific people and general public, thank you.
And that, we would have to figure out ways to kind of publicize with posters and or a letter to the editor and setter.
Kind of look at the city calendar and see.
Oh, that's a good idea. Oh yeah, because we need a space, good point, we could use the city. We definitely need this on our agenda for next month so that, for September, so that we can make sure we have all the pieces in place for October.
There's no meetings scheduled in the city for October 14th. Is that a holiday? That's come on this day.
That's high.
TPC, charter review. There's also nothing on the 9th, is that? Is that one of the Jewish holidays?
Nope.
Well, it's the second night of Yom Kippur, which we can't do for many, I don't know.
What, October 9?
Yeah, it's the end of the holiday, it would end at sundown on Wednesday, but there are Jews that would appeal.
Okay.
I personally would not.
Let's not do that, Tom. The 22nd and the 23rd of October.
That's worked for me. So far.
I cannot, I cannot do the 22nd.
Can you do the 23rd?
Yeah, 23rd, October 23rd.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we just need to find a venue.
Do we want to pick another one just in case?
Sure.
How about the 29th or the 30th? Or the 30th, well, not the 31st.
Uh, the 29th is good, we're talking October, right?
Yes.
I, I, I think the 29th is okay, but, but it sure is late.
Well, I, I'm, we, I think if we come up with this list right now, I think we could be managed in one meeting, but it may get longer is over the next month and just having a, a backup.
Mm-hmm. I'm thinking if we, if we want to have a draft for work by early November, yeah.
Right.
This is late.
It is late.
Why, the, the previous week, October 15th or 16th aren't good?
Um, I, I was just looking for openings in the calendar. Charter review is on the 15th, I got TPC, bi-competits, I'm standing there, community, public shade tree. Oh, they.
What about this, what about Wednesday and 16th? What's happening in the city?
The CPC has their meeting and that's a place that we want maybe people to be able to come, but we don't know what time. They might not look an afternoon meeting and.
They're in stuff.
Yeah.
What is CPC?
Community Preservation Committee and they're the ones that give, that use money for conservation area pesticide.
But, but we could invite them to come on the 23rd. Yeah, CPC people.
We definitely have to brainstorm, we would like to specifically invite.
So we could have, if we had, if we just went ahead and scheduled two sessions on the 16th and the 23rd, then we'll specifically invite the CPC people for the 23rd.
Definitely have to be council chambers though, because they're in here. On the 16th.
What kind of the shade tree?
It's their fault, right?
So we could probably get to hearing. So are we going with the 16th and the 23rd? Or?
I'm, I'm going with that.
And we had the 29th, we're canceling that?
Yeah, it's too late.
Okay.
And we don't have a time or a place, correct?
Who would we ask to reserve these rooms? Is that Laura function?
We can ask Laura to do it for us.
Now Laura's out of town right now, she's on vacation.
Yeah, we can just shoot her an email.
You think she'll?
Well, if we do the hearing rooms, you ask the mayor's office, Annie or Court. Question is, if we want to do it in the hearing room?
What?
To me, it's not the most inviting of places, but whatever.
And then for the 23rd, we would have.
23rd, we could actually do it here.
On the 23rd?
If there's nothing else here. I'm trying to see if there's not.
Here, 23rd, nothing's going on.
So this space, we would, I think, could, don't, you think you can ask in the mayor's office to reserve?
So just ask Annie or Court directly for those two rooms for those days.
Yeah. And then the only thing is what time.
So, so how about 7:00 PM, 7, 7 to what, 8:30?
Yeah.
About two hours?
7 to 9?
I would just, yeah, just for the extra, and if they end earlier, that's fine too.
Reserve for 7:00.
One thing that we try to do for other kinds of public forums is to do them at different times though, so that the people who like work in the evening or can't come evenings can come during the day. So we could do like one during the day. Or earlier or something, or not.
Well, what if somebody couldn't make it to either of these forums? And we have, we already have daytime meetings scheduled, you could just say, just a backup.
When we, when we're publicizing this, we say, you know, someone unable to attend these meetings, but, you know, blah, 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 can contact the committee of blah, blah, blah and arrange something else.
So 7 to 9 both times.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we'll flush out the details. So for, to reserve the room, we don't have to give a whole lot of details, we just say it's for their, for committee purposes. And then we'll flush out the details later. Okay, good work.
Uh, we never, we had a motion, but we never voted on it, which was in October, to hold a public forum to invite specific people and general public to present relevant information. In all in written form as they wish. In oral and written form as they wish in events, October sixteenth and twenty-third, and we'll ban time for room to be determined. And Adele, um, first, first thing, at least to do the second.
Thank you. Any, any more discussion?
Okay.
No? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Phew, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second that.
Do we technically need to table the things we didn't get to? I can't remember if that's a Robert's Rules thing.
What didn't we get to?
We didn't review our assignments and, oh, report back, actually. Yeah, yeah, you're right. I was thinking it was a report back of what people have done, but yes.
Okay. Okay, so for the next agenda, however, we could put on a report back of what, what's, what's been done. And, um, so those of us who have assignments that are not related to, to questioning the departments should get busy on compiling information, you know, keep on, um,
Effect of pesticides?
Yeah.
Which pesticides?
The one, well, we can guess
Stenylates first.
The common, we could probably guess what some of the common ones are.
And you and I need to have a nice municipalities are doing. But we don't know about what pesticides are being used because they are what, yeah.
It's true.
That should probably
So we can each report back next time. We'll put that on the agenda. How's that?
All right. And our next meeting is?
Oh, another potential inviteee is the, um, pollinators group. Thinking aloud wants to speak.
Uh, I believe our next meeting is September ninth at ten A M.
Nope. Oh, we have to get those rooms, we have to get, you could just submit a list to Laura or maybe to the mayor's office to get the space reserved for all those meetings.
Oh.
And we have to remember just to get everything on the, the agendas in on time and all that stuff.
Yes.
So it's going to be fast and furious since we're meeting twice a month. It's a lot of work in, in part, Adele.
Well, it's, that's, that's pretty minor, but, um, I'm just worried that because Laura's on vacation, what do we do?
I think
About scheduling
They actually, the ultimate schedule is up in the mayor's office, so I think all the dates we could submit directly, because Laura does it as a favor to us. I don't think she actually reserves the council chambers.
Okay.
I believe it's either Annie or Court that has a master schedule for all the city, the city spaces.
Okay.
So you could just submit it to them directly. Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, so I'm going to ask them for those days.
The Lynn person.
Lynn is the chief of staff of the mayor.
Okay, and what's her last name?
Simmons.
Are we?
I have a cousin.
You haven't gone on, right?
Okay, so now we're going to adjourn the meeting, right?
To adjourn.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye. It was great.